Good evening, welcome to the seven o'clock regular session of the Newport Beach City Council, October ninth. Close session report, or roll call please.
The record will show that all members are present except for Councilman Han who is excused.
Okay, close session report, to the attorney?
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing disclosed, or nothing to report. Okay. There's a fine line between that. Okay, we're gonna have our pledge of allegiance and then we're gonna have an invocation given to us by Reverend Peter Haines of Saint Michael and All Angels Episcopal Church. And if Don-san here would give the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate it. You don't have to do it in Japanese though, now.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May we be in prayer. Wondrous God, fountain of life and source of goodness, you have made all that is and given us all that we have. We are grateful and thank you for the people of this beautiful place and for so many beautiful places on the face of this earth. We also thank you for able, responsible leaders who lead us in the mutual regard which forms our civic life. Give us, we pray, your spirit of peace, justice, charity, wisdom, humor, and grace that we may find with one another the fulfillment of our common humanity here in this lovely city. For you are gracious great lover of souls and to you we give glory and honor now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, our first, I don't know if it's a presentation, but our first order of business here. We have some visitors with us tonight, they've come a long way from the other side of the Pacific Ocean, from Japan. As many of you may know, Okazaki is a sister city for the sister, or for the city of Newport Beach. And tonight we have with us some residents of Okazaki. I believe there, most of them are essay contest winners and they won the right to come here. And we also have two chaperones who are here with Okazaki students that are visiting the United States on an exchange program that Newport Beach has with Okazaki. So, is there any, something that the folks want to say, or? Sherry? Oh, Sherry Myers, she's president of the Sister City Association, why don't you all come up?
They're gonna all introduce themselves because I'm not very good at names, especially Japanese names. And we have an interpreter here.
Good evening, my name is Yasunobu Ogino. Three years ago, I was retired and now OYA, Okazaki International Association and CCC, Cross-Culture Circle members.
My name is Ikkyo Kato. I had a good time in Newport Beach. I don't want to come back. Thank you!
You'll have to write another essay.
My name is Kazuko Suzuki. I'm sorry, I can't speak English, but very, very happy days. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lioko Hayako. My job is civic hall about industry. I'm happy now, very thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maya Hyodo. My job is office lady in the name of Icing Engineering. I'm happy, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tamiye Matsui. I am a teacher, childcare for our special college. I like Newport Beach and Newport Beach is very beautiful and kindness. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shiro Suzuki. I am not essay contest winner. I am staff of Okazaki City Government Office. Thank you.
Thank you. The chaperones, do they want to say something?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. One behalf, on behalf of the essay contest winners, I would like to express our gratitude toward honorable Mayor Mr. Rozanski. As a city council member, Newport Beach Sister City Association's member, and Newport Beach As you see after our arrival in Newport Beach, all of our members have been overwhelmed by Newport Beach students, wait, hospitality, and friendship. I dearly appreciate Newport Beach Sister City Association's big efforts to make our visit unforgettable. I understand NBSCA members have been working on the arrangement, arrangement for the money, minute adjutant for us. Also, I know, all of them are so busy with preparing for the Okazaki Junior High School student visit to Newport Beach. On November twenty-seventh nineteen eighty-four, in this very room, the sister city relationship between our two cities was made official. And very soon, we'll reach its twenty-third year. Thanks to your support and operation, our sister city relationship had become so strong and significant. So far, about sixty-eighty, Okazaki students have visited Newport Beach and about three-hundred-seventy Newport Beach students have been come to Okazaki. This spring, we had an honor to welcome twenty-two Newport Beach students, including honorable Mayor Mr. Rozanski. We enjoyed welcoming and entertaining them in the volunteers level, which produce a real student-level friendship. This time, we experienced homestay. As you know, junior high school students have already enjoyed it, but our adult members are, for the first time, first of course, we are little nervous and I'm excited. But now, we are all felt it's super and unforgettable. We believe this experience will make our relationship much stronger. Honorable Mayor Mr. Rozanski, Newport Beach Sister City Association member, and our friends here, thanks again. Thanks you again for your kindness to give us a big chance to be here with you. We are so proud of having such a wonderful city as Newport Beach, our sister city. Thank you very much, Yasunobu Ogino.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Yoshitaka Kobayashi. I am the chief of delegation and director of the Okazaki Board of Education. I had, I had a happy and good day in Newport Beach where there are beautiful blue sky and blue sea and nice views every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Yoshiko Tanaka. I'm a teacher of elementary school and chaperone of this delegation. One of our students said, "I want to throw my passport" because this, they had so many wonderful time and good memories, they want to come back to Japan. It's same to me. Instead of students, I want to say you, thank you for goodness and very kindness and have a, give us good times and memories. Thank you.
Thank you.
They have some, they actually have a few presents for, to present.
Okay, and I actually have a few presents to present as well. Sure.
One more, chaperone hands.
Oh, sorry.
We are very happy to visit this beautiful city, Newport Beach, and your school. We welcomed six students from Newport Beach this July and we had a wonderful time with them. When we met them again, we remembered about happy days in Japan. Okazaki City is very nice place to live for me and Newport Beach is same for you. If you have a chance, please come to Okazaki City someday. Finally, we hope that this, this exchange program will be continued and our friendship will last forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that all these folks are being sponsored by residents in the city here and they're all staying in private homes. I don't think any of them are staying in hotels, are they? Yeah, so, thank you all to the residents of Newport Beach who opened their homes to these fine people for their trip here. And so, I'll come down and we'll present the gifts and Don's gonna join me in his happy coat.
Steve and I had the honor of, in April, visiting Okazaki for about five or six days and we were just shown a wonderful time and this is a really good outcome of two nations sharing their people back and forth to where we can get a little bit more familiar with both people's customs and, and we really welcome you here to Newport Beach also.
This is for me or for the city? Here, I'll put it down here. Okay, I'll set that on their behalf. No, I'll have to wear these. He's my assistant. Okay, I have a few gifts I'd like to present. First to the chaperones, for the students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And for the essay winners, I thought what better gift than a pen so you can write another essay and come back again. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Your official city before.
Thank you all for coming.
Oh, if you wanna get a picture over here.
Yes, sure.
One more thing, the students, there's six of them. These are for the students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So let's get a big picture and come over here, see if we can, pictures. Hi, Mayor Lee. Paul here. Mayor Lee, did you take this to him with his camera?
I'll be on the picture.
Come on, girls. They'll be bashful. Here, we need some more people. Sherry, you wanna go this way? Everybody here? Here, one more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Think they're all going out to dinner now after, right? Dinner?
It's all we got.
It's not even louder than anything else you wear.
It doesn't, I've been informed by certain people down here that it doesn't match.
It doesn't match? Okay. Don and I both had the privilege of going to Okazaki earlier this year in April and I'll tell you, those folks really know how to treat visitors well. I arrived at City Hall with the contingency and all the city employees were lined up on the steps, they're all clapping, they handed me a bunch of flowers and, and you know, they really put on a...
Much the way it is here.
Much the way it is here. Every day when I walk into City Hall, they hand me flowers and people are clapping, you know, it's great.
On the way to Starbucks.
That's right. Okay, that was fun. All right, next we have our library foundation presentation of a check. Every time I see this guy out in the audience, I know we're getting some money, so it's, I'm always happy to see him. Oops, somebody left their glasses?
My glasses.
Oh, okay. Don, I think those are yours, aren't they? Oh, sorry. Uh-oh. Why don't you run outside and see if that belongs to somebody? They're still out in the lobby.
That's his.
Oh, that belongs to us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Tom Edwards, I'm president of the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation and it's quite appropriate that the sister city is here because most of you, if you've visited the library, they, we have two magnificent pieces of sculpture that they created from our sister city and also what the bamboo garden over at the main library. So anyway, my business here this evening, Mayor Rozanski, is to present the city another check for a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. This will be focused on children's program and also new books for adults. This is the second in a series of checks and later this year we'll present another check for at least a hundred and sixty-six thousand. And I'm also happy to report, as Linda Catzelaus may have let the council know, that we've committed also to raising about another four hundred thousand for a new software system for the library as well. So, without the support, first of all, the council, without the support of everybody in the community, this wouldn't be possible. So, Mayor Rozanski, if you would step down so I may present this check to you and also I'll ask Susan Warren of the library. Our chief librarian got hauled in for jury duty today, so she's not here this evening.
I would just like to say a quick thank you, Mayor Rozanski, City Council members, on behalf of the Board of Library Trustees and the residents of Newport Beach for this generous check once again in support of the library. Thank you.
Come on, you can get the picture too. There you go. Can you make this out to Steve or Nancy?
Okay, thank you.
Steve, she forgot to give you a present. There's also information, when you were in Okazaki, the people gave a party and presented you a book on sumo wrestling. This is the information on how to read the sumo wrestling book. So, we can understand it now.
Did you get one of the costumes?
Wow, look at this. Now I got a new bass.
Kotovinsky.
With Kotovinsky, this is our, the city's a member of the Kotovinsky Fan Club, by the way. He was just elevated to the second highest level, he's now at Oziki. I think there's only one guy higher than that. One Yokozuna?
Two.
Two Yokozunas. There you go. Thank you. Very nice.
Okay. I believe that concludes our presentations. Madam City Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Curry.
I'd like to remind everyone that on November the ninth, November the tenth, Saturday, there will be a fundraiser for the Marines Memorial held at the American Legion Hall. This is one of the first of many events to support this, it's a community-supported event. And so, please feel free to contact either the city manager's office or contact my office for information regarding the event. It's gonna be a fabulous way to meet both Benjamin Victor, the artist, and also to support this very worthy community undertaking. Thank you.
Mayor Bertemis Sollis.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Webb.
In our package, we have a letter that was responded back to Costa Mesa concerning the West Side Lofts at six forty Monrovia Avenue. It looks like a fairly substantial residential development and change of use for a lot of pieces of property. And I didn't see in the letter any mention of the Nineteenth Street Bridge or extension of Nineteenth Street as well as the need with the intensification of use they have here for potentially the extension of the Route fifty-five freeway. So I think that maybe we ought to see if we can come up with some sort of wording that might ask that those be described in a little more detail than probably what they were.
Councilwoman DeGel?
Yes, tomorrow evening at the Newport Harbor High School, six thirty PM, there'll be a forum on keep your teens safe and it's being put on by the school district and the police department. The city is trying to play a positive role in helping our teenagers and their parents. And so the program is aimed at both teenagers and parents and the topics include teenage driving, substance abuse, suicide, and internet safety. So that will take place at the high school.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item number four, Dick.
Thought I'd give you the benefit of distance. Number four, my understanding of this is that we're bringing a new group of employees, and I had thought they were at two and a half percent at fifty-five. Is that not true, or is, could you just explain that for a moment?
Well, Mr. Mayor, number four isn't anything about retirement formula. Number three was miscellaneous employees going from two percent at fifty-five to two and a half percent at fifty-five. But the employees would be paying the whole cost of them.
Okay, now, this is my understanding that this resolution allows a person who wishes to get the two and a half percent at fifty-five as a retirement pension and is not eligible right now to sign up for it and pay the delta difference? Is that...
No, that isn't what this resolution is about.
Okay, I, would you just say that again? I'm sorry.
The answer was no. Dave, would you care to explain what this resolution is about?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and council members and Mr. Nichols, this resolution is actually a cleanup resolution to the existing system. It does continue into the proposed benefit, but it also applies to the past benefit where to make sure, we have to adopt a resolution telling PERS that these, that these contributions from members are tax-deferred. So it's a simple resolution implementing that, actually, we should have done this earlier. We just caught this administratively that we needed to adopt this as well. So note, this does not affect any change to any retirement plan.
So it's kind of a housekeeping item?
It's very much a housekeeping item, Councilmember.
And it just means that those contributions are, because they're employee contributions, can be removed if the employee leaves service, doesn't end up retiring with Newport Beach, right? I have nothing against that, I'm just trying to understand it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a further comment? Seeing no one, I'll bring you back for motion.
Move the action.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number seven, Councilman Gardner and staff basically has asked that this item be continued indefinitely. Assistant City Manager Kiff, do you want to tell us why, or just fine-tuning the agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Got to fine-tune the agreement. So any further comment? Public comment? Seeing no one.
Move the action for it to continue?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Wasn't that part of the original motion? I thought it was.
Okay. Oh, was it? I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, was it part of the motion? Sorry. Okay, moving right along. Public comments.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach, and this afternoon there was an issue of fluoridation by Metropolitan Water District, and I learned that Metropolitan Water District is a wholesaler of water, and that they don't, that they did not have to comply with state legislation because they have no hookups. And what will be added to our drinking water, whether we want it, water whether we want it or not, is a hazardous byproduct, and it's called hydrophyllousic acid. And this was in 1999, Councilmember Keith Byer said this. "I wasn't elected to sit idly by or to provide political cover for state legislators that rubber-stamp industries attempt to recycle hazardous waste by dumping it into our drinking waters," said Escondido Councilmember Keith Byer. "Our water department calculates that we would be buying more than thirty-three tons a year of a substance that can't be given to us for free because it is classified as a toxic hazardous waste, yet we are supposed to accept that if we pay thirty-five cents per gallon," those are 1999 prices, "and they will slap a new label on the container, the same toxic waste can be shipped to us untreated directly from the scrubber systems of the phosphate fertilizer industry that they use to keep fluorine from becoming airborne and killing everything in sight, and that on the truck ride here it will magically be converted to a safe and desirable nutrient. The kicker to this whole scheme is that the amount intended for the targeted children for cavities is only sixteen pounds of the thirty-three tons." I mean, that speaks volumes about what's going on. Since this afternoon, it was determined by everybody that infants aren't supposed to have fluoride anymore, and the American Dental Association in November of 2006 never even sent a press release. They only sent an email to their client base. And we know, as any logical person will believe, that when we take a bath or a shower, there's dermal absorption. So since we know that the children of this city are not supposed to have fluoride, and we're going to be putting fluoride in, infants especially, zero to twelve months, my question to you is, when you inform people that you cannot use fluoridated water in formula because you have to do that, because you are, you have liability here, because you're supplying us and we pay you for it, I want you to also tell the mothers how they're supposed to bathe their babies. Because if it was a cat, you could lick the baby clean, okay? The ADA is saying that you'd have to have, use breast milk, that's what they're saying, okay? So women in this city can use breast milk, that's not a problem. But my issue is, how do you bathe the baby? How do you clean the child? It's an issue because it's, because they will absorb fluoride. Thank you for your time, and thank you again for how gracious you were at the study session today, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dolores.
I apologize for wearing out my welcome, but I do believe that this fluoride issue is worthwhile. I would like to give a suggestion. We have some natural fluorides in our water, they're small amounts. Why don't we just say we already are fluoride, have fluorides in our water, it occurs naturally, we're happy with what we got, we meet the law, that's all that it requires to have, and basically, we do not want any more. And tell that to MWD, we have MODOC, that we can have his representatives up there, too, and just simply say that we do not agree that this should be put in our water supply. Let's see what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Anybody else that wants to speak on non-agenda items?
Hi, my name is David Vine, and I'll pose a rhetorical question to the council and the city of Newport. Why does our state Senator Tom Harmon want over three thousand criminals to come back to Newport? Our prisons are filling up, but this isn't news to us. But a three-judge panel is debating whether to open the gates of California's prisons and let tens of thousands of felons walk right out of the door without serving their full sentences. Fortunately for us in Orange County, nearly every Republican legislator from Orange County has joined more than twenty-five others to file a motion to intervene against these judges, to keep prisoners where they belong, behind bars and out of places like Newport. Well, the one exception is Republican Senator Tom Harmon from Huntington Beach. He stands alone, key in hand, as the only Orange County Republican legislator supportive of the free the felon's policy. The three-judge panel's solution is quite simple. The prisons are crowded, so let criminals go free. In fact, their proposal would let out fifty thousand or more prisoners, three thousand of which are from right here in Orange County. With more than eighty percent of the prison population being made up of violent criminals, it seems outrageous and unconscionable that Senator Harmon would stand out as the only Republican legislator from Orange County, not doing everything in his power to avert the danger of marginally punished criminals going back into our community. I urge you to not let the years of hard work by the city's mayor, council, and police department to go to waste when criminals are released. Let Senator Harmon know that we in Newport and the rest of Orange County will not stand for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Don DiCestano of Newport Beach. We've got something a little lighter to talk about tonight, there are a lot of serious issues, and fluoride is certainly one of them. But we are opening an electric vehicle distributorship here in Newport Beach. We're looking at a couple of different sites, one here, right here on Balboa Peninsula. We just wanted to let the council know about this because we intend to sell and rent electric vehicles, primarily hybrid bicycles. And for those who aren't familiar with hybrid bicycles, I'm sure you're familiar with hybrid cars, the hybrid bicycles you pedal, and it also gives electric assistance. For me, I learned a couple of years ago when I moved up on the hill that I loved riding a bike down here on the peninsula, but I didn't like so much riding back up superior to where I live, so I got an electric bicycle, and I found out that most of the time now I'm pedaling. When I'm going up the hill, you'll see me give it the electricity and take it up the hill, but I found myself to be losing weight, being much better physically fit by using an electric hybrid bicycle. The world is moving toward electricity in cars. I think General Motors is going to finally come out with one, the Volt, which will be out coming later because the technology has changed. Lithium polymer batteries are coming of age, they're being very well-developed. We have a, one bike here that's, just to show you here, to make you aware of this, we're looking to promote it from an environmental standpoint, also from a renewable energy source. The electricity we get is mostly from renewable energy, so electricity is a good positive step for us. So for anybody who would, anything knows anything about electricity and recharging them, these are plug-ins, you plug them in in your household, you ride them, you can pedal them, you can also use the assist, they're called pedal assists, so if you need a little bit of gas, you turn on the motor and it assists you while you're riding it. It helps quite a bit when there's a headwind, when you're riding and you get a little tired. It also helps quite a bit for somebody like myself who wasn't out to ride bicycles but have found it to be very friendly. I was amazed here when I was here, Fourth of July, how you shut down the Boulevard here and everybody rides their bikes, and I thought, boy, what a great day if we could just have everybody riding bikes, particularly here on the peninsula where it's crowded and parking's a problem. This is the latest model, and it's a lithium ion battery. It just came over from, they're built in China, they seem to have the world, I think ninety-nine point nine percent of all bicycles in the world are made in China. But this one is pedal assist, it has, it's a fully functional bicycle in every regard, except it's got that lithium ion battery pack on it that'll allow you to ride a lot easier and a lot smoother when you want to. When you don't want to, it's just great exercise. The next phase of it will be electric vehicles, where right now we've got our application to two manufacturers for electric vehicles. These are NEVs, there's some you see running around here. Ford and Chrysler made a try at that and failed quite a bit at it because they were overpriced. The price has to be right so that the general consumer can afford it. The same throughs too with the bicycles, we're going to have them priced from four or five hundred dollars up to as much as two thousand dollars, depending on the quality and the style of the bike. So we just asked the city to support us in our mission to sell and rent environmentally energy-friendly vehicles, because it'll reduce pollution, congestion, and it'll also save on some parking places down here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No lead paint in that, is there?
No.
You can just wheel that over next to those presents with, from the Japanese folks. Okay, anybody else have a comment on a non-agenda item?
Hi, I'm Bob Costin, some of you know me, some of you don't. I've been watching from at home for quite a while, haven't seen me down here, and there's some things that have been happening that have been troubling me deeply.
Not speed bumps?
Uh, no, no, no.
That was the last time you were here.
Anybody can come down here and speak for three minutes, making a spouse venom, lies, mistruths, and get away with it with impunity. It's privileged, it's their right. But after that's done, I believe it's your responsibility to correct the record. I've been on, watching TV, and on TV I've seen people slam your staff, I've seen them impugn their character, going from the city manager to one of the attorneys that work for your city attorney, and even your city attorney as far as their credibility and trustworthiness. There's only one time I've seen anyone up there in the dais come back out and correct the record, and that was when Don Webb indicated that he did trust Robin Costin. I believe it's your responsibility, now, I've testified from San Diego to Sacramento, and I've been to a lot of hearings for people who are contentious and upset, but I've never seen a board or a city council sit back and let somebody spew mistruths and degrade and tear apart staff like I've seen on TV this last time when Bob Burnham was ripped for no valuable reason. Mistruths were never corrected, I was stunned by the silence. I've asked that from the future, you people, stand up, stand beside each other, and unanimously, you know, if one person says, I trust you, or you're wrong, and comes up with something, it should be unanimous. You guys can disagree on anything you want, if you want to disagree on where to put the city hall, that's one thing. These people, as well as the person that has resigned because he doesn't want to put up with it, these people represent you, and they represent you very well. Now, to replace Bob Burnham, you know, an example, I would have perhaps, if I had the opportunity, would have asked, well, okay, if somebody's talking about a thousand dollars being a lot of money, well, Mr. Burnham's a senior attorney level. If you're to go out to hire that person on the open market, I don't believe you could hire him for less than three hundred to four hundred dollars an hour. That'd be twenty-four hundred to thirty-two hundred dollars an hour, a day, for services rendered. He's charging, there are complaints, a thousand, I believe somebody should have up there said what the facts are, and what Mr. Burnham's worth, and what value he brings to the table. Not only years, decades of influence and having a relationship built with many people, and not unlike myself. I met him first as an adversary across the table, and I learned that he was honest, you could listen to what he had to say, he wouldn't sell anybody out, and he'd give you the best possible shot trying to gain some kind of a decent settlement. Now, as far as the homes down here on the peninsula, that's important, absolutely, I've got clients down here. But as far as the airport, that is huge, and there's no one that knows it better than Bob Burnham. And I would hope that you'd be able to start representing the citizens by taking control of the city, and not allowing some person to come up here and just go crazy on misinformation. I think that it's time that we no longer allow this population on, at home on TV, as well as in the newspapers, to hear these people coming off without any kind of correction. I mean, I just, we need you guys to take control and bring back the city to where it needs to go, and that is airport, water quality, as well as the, as the homes on the peninsula. But it's not going to be done unless we get people informed, because if you remain silent, I believe that's the same thing as tacit endorsement, when people come up with these lies and the mistruths. So I ask that you please support your staff, support the citizens, and not let this be a bully pulpit for someone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think you are correct in your statement that there have been a lot of spurious comments made about our city's staff, made about Bob Burnham, we, they basically forced him out of the city. He was a resource that we depended on for our airport negotiations, probably had more institutional knowledge of our airport agreements and our airport issues than anybody else in the city, you know, with his twenty-plus years working on those issues. And so I fully support Bob Burnham, I'm sorry to see him go, and I think you're quite right that we haven't done enough as a city council here to support our staff, who've basically been barraged with, I think, a lot of unkind words and sentiments and mistruths and misstatements. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And thank you for your support, and I look forward to having a start anew, and having, when these kinds of issues come up, that you all band together and do what's right for the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bob Rush. I agree with the gentleman, there are quite a bit of uninformed people out there. And so maybe we could start with explaining why Bob Burnham was signing contracts with outside consultants who were providing services for the city of Newport Beach, while at the same time those consultants were sitting on his private business, Board of Directors, drug rehab business. And my, by the way, at the same time those same consultants were consulting other neighboring cities and how to control their local group home rehab facility problems, but we never had the opportunity here because Bob Burnham had them on his drug rehab Board of Directors. Maybe you could explain that to us? Maybe you could explain that to the gentleman? Maybe Homer and Robin could explain that? They were closest with Bob, and Bob told me personally, face to face, that everybody around him knew what he was doing. So maybe you guys could explain it to us and to the gentleman who just spoke. Thank you.
Homer, do you have an explanation for Mr. Rush?
Well, I do, because I worked side by side with, with Bob Burnham whenever he entered into an agreement with California Strategies, and that agreement was for consulting services in order to help with our spheres issues. The spheres issues included landfill, they included airport, they included Bank Bay annexation, and a number of issues. And certainly people on the council knew that that consulting firm was hired and entered into. At the time the contract was entered into, there was nobody on California Strategies who was a member of any nonprofit board that is being mentioned here. There was a member of California Strategies that joined a nonprofit foundation, but that was well after a year that the contract was entered into, at no pay.
Is that foundation Bob Burnham's foundation?
No, it isn't. It is, I don't remember the name of it, but it's a court foundation for...
It's the Drug Court Foundation of Orange County.
One of the pieces of misinformation that is coming out is that Bob Burnham has a drug rehab business. Bob Burnham never had a drug rehab business, he has had no interest nor financial interest in any of the rehabilitation homes or any of the businesses doing business in the city of Newport Beach. His wife is on a nonprofit...
Does he have an interest in any other city other than the city of Newport Beach?
No, nowhere. No interest at all in drug rehabilitation services through rehab residential facilities. His wife is a operator and runs and not, works as part of a nonprofit that works with the courts on drug rehabilitation through the court system. She does things like take drug rehab people up to places like get tickets for baseball games, she takes them up to the Getty, she helps get them medical assistance, dental assistance, works with them to try and get them worked back into the community. The work is done through the court system in the county, there's nothing done here in Newport Beach. And the other thing that is also another misrepresentation is, since Bob Burnham retired in two thousand four, August two thousand four, he has not provided any advice, any information, or anything having to do with the ordinance or the regulation to me in my enforcement efforts or in my drafting of the new ordinances. So at that point in time, Mr. Rush has insisted that he was required to file a conflict of interest form. He did not do any work along those lines for me or for any of the attorneys that I've talked to. People may insist that they believe that he was, but he was not. The only thing that Bob Burnham has done since he retired is to advise or give some background information or any help that either Homer and I need on the general plan, when we were going through the general plan adoption, and when we were, and anything that he's been working on for the aviation committee, and on the airport issues, which has been his sole focus. Bob Burnham didn't really even have time to work on the other, because he also worked for the city of Laguna Beach on the issues that happened to them when they had the landslide, and he was hired and spent most of his time down there. In fact, he spent very little time in the office. So there was no reason from the time that he retired for him to file any conflict of interest forms. So everything that Mr. Rush says, he says, he takes information out of context, puts it together, and draws conclusions that are incorrect.
Okay, so let me see if I can understand this.
Mr. Rush, you were not asked to come back to the podium.
Let me see if I can understand this.
No, please sit down, Mr. Rush. Please sit down, Mr. Rush.
Your spin is ridiculous.
Thank you. Please sit down. Please sit down, Ms. Skinner, I'm not finished yet. Thank you. Mr. Bloudow.
Well, I do have something else to add, because there was a quote attributed to Mr. Rush in the Sunday's Daily Pilot that said Newport Beach was paying Mr. Burnham almost a thousand dollars a day. Based upon that claim, I went back through the last fifty-six weeks of payroll periods during which Bob Burnham did charge the city some money for consulting services. During that period, he worked three hundred and sixty-seven and a half hours and grossed forty-four thousand one hundred dollars. The most work he ever charged us in one day was five and a half hours. He was paid at the rate of a hundred and twenty dollars per hour as called for by his contract. So if he was paid a thousand dollars a day, or almost a thousand dollars a day, that would have translated into two hundred and eighty thousand dollars instead of forty-four thousand dollars. He averaged not a thousand dollars a day, but seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars per week, or an average of one hour and nineteen minutes per week worked for the city, charged for strictly airport issues.
Thank you. All right, does anybody else have any comments on non-agenda items?
Nancy Skinner, Newport Beach. I'm just listening to my friend about, my friend Bob Burnham, I've been a resident here for forty-five years and have had lots of interaction with him over the years, and I just, I'm amazed that anybody would be attacking him. He's done so much for the city, and we really need him for the airport. I hope there's some way that you can get past this and affirm him. We need his expertise, and we need it desperately for the airport, and I thank you for defending him tonight, because it just makes no sense to me at all that anybody would attack someone like Bob Burnham. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Lori Morris, West Newport. This actually has changed what I was going to say tonight, so I'll address what seems to be quite a bit of a setup here for Mr. Burnham. I think this was a great deal for him. No one asked Mr. Burnham to resign. If the JWA people want to keep him, they can have him. They know what they're getting. The only thing that was requested ever was that the Form 700s be filed. That is for transparency in government. He worked in Laguna Beach on the landslide issue, I just found out that this week, and he filed seven hundred forms in Laguna Beach. If it is such a non-issue as this should be filing these forms, why on the landslide issue did Laguna Beach have him file Form 700s? John Wayne is a big issue for this city. The group homes were a big issue for this city, and he was not filing the seven hundred forms while he was a consultant, not an advisor, a consultant. So that's what was asked for. I don't think that any group in the city of Newport Beach would go against transparency in government. If, if he's a resource for them, that's great. File the Form 700, so that, so there's, it should be good for him to file those. It makes no sense to me. The other issue is this that we keep coming up against is, well, who's doing what, what it, you know, are people involved? And it's become a big issue within the community. We've had two other council members who have stated they have not now, nor have they ever had financial interest in group homes. In addition, Councilman Hin has discussed his pharmacy issue with the FPPC, and has been cleared to sit on this council and participate in the group home rehab issue. But at one time, there was a woman up here, I believe it was like two weeks ago, that asked you, Mayor, if you had in fact any, you know, are you involved, or have you been involved in the group home issue? That was never answered. And like that gentleman said, that would be great if, when we're at public comments, if those things were answered. I don't think it's asking too much. All of you are here to do the people's business honestly and openly, which is required, which requires you to disclose potential conflicts. And I think, Mayor, that you owe the community to answer that simple question. It would put it to rest, no one would, it would go no further, and it would, everything would be clean. It's, we've had two other council people say, no, we, we're not involved in this, we, you know, it's a pretty simple question to get answered. So that brings us back to Bettina's question, is are you now, or have you ever been involved with, financially, with group rehab businesses?
I'm going to ask you a question first. Why do you think I am involved? I've been hearing, and let me, yeah, rumors. And they're being spread by Mr. Rush behind you.
Not being spread.
But I had a quest, I had a discussion with Mr. Rush this morning, this very morning, about this very issue. Mr. Rush indicates that I, at least he's indicated to other people, at least that's what they've told me, that I have some type of a conflict here. And I've asked Mr. Rush, if I have a conflict, or you think I have a conflict, what do you base that on? And I'll ask you the same question. What do you base that on?
I'm basing it on hearing from different sources within the city.
I'll tell you right now, I have never had an ownership interest in any rehab facility. And I'll tell you furthermore, that the document that you folks printed in the newspaper, it seems to have a dot on my home, which indicates that I'm having a sober living facility either in my home or in some adjacent house, maybe the map is not that accurate. But if it is my home that you're referring to, I would ask that you remove that from the map.
The dot, I can't answer for.
Well, there's one in the two-hundred block of Laguna Street where I live, and it seems to be right on top of my house.
Well, that might be something to ask.
So I do not operate a sober living facility downstairs from my house, you're more than welcome to come over and, and meet my tenants downstairs, or meet my tenants at any of the properties that I own in town.
Well, I don't believe that's ever been asked.
And you'll see that there are no sober living facilities being operated at any property that I have an ownership interest in.
Well, I don't believe that's ever been asked, or that's not one of the things that's been issued.
Well, you've asked and I've answered it, and I hope that you will spread that amongst your fellow residents.
Well, actually, you saying it right here at council is the perfect place to do that. When that question was asked many times, it's a perfect time.
Okay, is Miss Morris's time up? I'm not, I'm not looking to have a debate with you, Miss Morris, okay? I've asked, answered your question, but this...
That's all we ask for.
Ma'am, this forum is not for Q and A for the city council, and I would encourage, it is not for Q and A, and if a council member... And if the council members do not want to answer your questions, it's perfectly within our right. And I don't, ma'am, please don't look back at the audience. I'm talking to you. And if you come here or run around town casting spurious, or making spurious remarks about me or any of my other fellow council members, don't expect to come here and demand responses. If you want to talk to me, I've never had a conversation with you offline. You come here, as does Mr. Rush or other people, to embarrass us publicly. If you wanted an answer, I would be more than happy to have answered you if you would have contacted me. But I've never received an email, a phone call, a personal come up to me when I'm outside and ask me, do you have an interest? You, I file my Form 700s, I file all my forms. You are more than welcome to go to the city clerk's office and where I disclose all of my ownership interests, all of my financial interests that are required to be disclosed. So for you to, to basically cast guilt upon me or any other council member by making these questions, it's like, it's like proven negative, basically. And I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
What are public comments for?
Thank you, ma'am. But not for besmirching the reputation of me or Bob Burnham or Ms. Clausen or our city manager or anybody, any other city employee.
Free speech.
Free speech, and you've had your three minutes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes, Councilwoman Gardner.
Of the city clerk. My understanding is that it's a procedural issue almost, that because these are not on the agenda, that we are not supposed to be engaging in dialogue on them, and that's always been part of my reticence. Am I misunderstanding this?
I believe that the policy states that it's not a question and answer period. I don't have it in front of me to say exactly what it is, but it's-
Thank you, members of the council. My name is David Diamond, I'm a Newport Beach resident for over 30 years. I am speaking strictly regarding Bob Burnham at this point. I do not have any knowledge of whether there was any conflict at all regarding Mr. Burnham and his dealings with the city. I do know that during the years 2004 to 2007, many disastrous changes took place in the city involving the need for conditional use permits and other restrictions that have allowed a problem, or I'll say a cancer, to exist within the city of Newport Beach, and I'm speaking basically of the group homes. It needs to be addressed, I know you know that it needs to be addressed. And I think it's very important that we have openness in the city. The gentleman who spoke and the lady who spoke on behalf of Mr. Burnham, or even members of the staff, I don't know if they know everything involving Mr. Burnham. I don't. So I'm not going to accuse him of anything, but I do know he refused, perhaps on good argumentative grounds, to file the Form 700 forms, 700 forms with the city. And that creates an appearance of conflict. And it's the appearance of conflict of interest that is such concern to the citizens of the There's going to have to be actions taken by this board that are going to greatly influence the way we live within the city. And I think the city should do everything it can to give the confidence to our citizens that all openness that can be provided is provided. And that's all I'd like to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, or, Robin.
I just want to clarify, Bob Burnham never refused to file a 700 form in the city. I never asked him to, Homer never asked him to. It was my assessment of the regulations at the time that he was not required to, based upon the work that he was doing and based upon the way the regulations are required and the type of work that he was working on, as I said. Now, that said, before Bob retired, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I apologize, I wasn't able to answer that, but apparently when the demand was made that he filed a 700, Bob said that he would file the 700 form, and I have not heard anything to the opposite. He will file one, even though, in my opinion, he was not legally required to.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is George Schroeder and I'm a resident of Newport Beach. You know, I don't know why Bob Burnham quit, but he chose to quit himself. And I would just like to make a suggestion. If Bob doesn't want the job, I would like to recommend somebody else, and that would be Tom Edwards. He's very well versed in the airport issues and he has a great background. So if Bob doesn't want the job, then, you know, I would just like to say that you think about asking Tom Edwards to take the job.
Thank you, George.
Mayor, members of the city council, Denise Overman, I'm a resident of the city. I'm here on behalf of the concerned citizens of Newport Beach. This, to speak on behalf of the citizens, endeavored to work with the city for over four years to achieve regulation of residential care uses. In 2004, the local ordinances were intentionally gutted, and I'm not going to attribute that to any particular individual, but by the city, eliminating all regulation of these uses, this directly resulted in over-concentration of these facilities and has caused damage to our neighborhoods and the community. I think what people are upset about is the failure to assure the proper financial disclosures and ethical walls on a consistent basis, which may well have given rise to conflicts of interest that have caused misguidance to both the council and the public and adversely impacted the formation of public policy. We find that we have exhausted our remedies and we want the public to be aware that we have filed a formal demand with the city, asking that the city immediately enact ordinances to eliminate and prevent further over-concentration of residential care uses. As of this time, the damage to individual residents in the community are currently estimated to be well in excess of $250 million. And the citizens expect satisfactory ordinances to be enacted in the next 45 days. Thank you very much.
Anybody else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close public comments, move on to our current business. Item, or actually, I'm sorry, Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status, or actually, Oral Reports from City Council on Committee Activities. Councilwoman Gardner?
And now for something a little different. For you Monty Python fans. EQAC, we are, I think they're, we will be coming to council shortly with some proposals on both green building and zero waste. We've got a couple of subcommittees that are really going gangbusters, some new faces, very enthusiastic, that will be presenting to EQAC at this month's meeting, and I'm looking forward to what they bring forth to us. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daylon?
On behalf of the-
Councilwoman Webb?
On behalf of the aviation committee, I would like to really express our thanks for the services that Mr. Burnham has prevented, provided to the city over the many, many years related to our airport issues. It's over, probably over 25 years. And when you consider going back to the 1985 settlement agreement, there were many years prior to that that he worked on the airport issues to come up with the settlement agreement as well as the extensions of that agreement. I personally have worked with Bob the entire time he's with the city. And during that time, I have a tremendous amount of respect for his ethics and the way things, the way he did things. And I am really sad to see that a group has tried to defame his character and his way of handling things, because that's not what I experienced during his entire career.
Thank you, Councilman Hen, or Curry, sorry. It's the ghost of Councilman Hen.
No reports.
And Mayor Pretem Solis.
Well, on a more pleasant note, I'm happy to report on behalf of the Marina Park Committee that we have arrived at a plan for Marina Park. All the groups involved, the different interest groups on the committee have all come together on the plan. We're going to have one final review on a few details the third week of this month, and so I'm hoping that we'll have it on the November 6 city council agenda for presentation. And I won't steal the thunder of the presentation and give away any of the details, but I think you'll find it an exciting plan and a great addition to the city.
Thank you. This is not a council committee activity, but I would like to report on the park development committee meeting that was held yesterday led by Chair Deborah Allen, who's out in the audience. We discussed the beginning of the outreach for the Sunset Ridge Park, which is finally getting off the ground. Consultant's been hired, and I believe that the first public outreach meeting will occur here on November 7, probably sometime in the evening. What time? Oh, November 15th, did we change it? Okay. Planning Commission's here on the 15th.
15th, Thursday night.
Yeah, Planning Commission meets here. Oh, all right, well, we're going to be having our first outreach meeting sometime in November. It's going to be a great project, 12-acre park at the corner of Superior and Coast Highway.
Mr. Mayor, the Planning Commission has changed its schedule for November.
Oh, okay.
I know that you-
Is that why it was? Okay.
12?
The 15th is the change date?
12.
Oops. Well, stay tuned, we'll figure it out, but in November. All right, that's the end of that. Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report. Dave?
And Mayor and council members, the Planning Commission had a fairly light agenda last week. An item for a use permit for a convenience store at the ARCO station at 2100 Bristol to San Ana Heights, and the second go-round was approved. There had been a lot of concerns about access issues to the site. Those were worked out to satisfaction of the commission. The commission also received a progress report on implementation of the housing element that will be also presented to the city council in November.
Dave, a question for you on the ARCO convenience store. I understand that the commission drove some improvements into that related to the restrooms.
Yes, ma'am. One of the concerns when the commission reviewed, first reviewed the project in August was that the two restrooms exited directly to the outside and the commission pushed to have the both entrances within the building so they could be monitored, and that, in fact, did happen.
I really appreciate that the commission took the time to make those improvements. Thank you.
That all? Thank you, Dave. Okay, moving on to current business, item number 15, resolution number 2007-something relating to the city council ad hoc committee on group residential unit, uses. Is Dave giving you a report on this?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I don't know that a staff report is necessary. Just for the folks at home, this is a resolution that would create a new city council ad hoc committees solely focusing on group residential uses, similar to the committee that just existed and expired relating to legal review. The concept here is that the, this committee would work directly with the special counsel on this issue and then report back to the full council, all seven of you.
Thank you, Dave. It is my intention to appoint Councilmember Hen, Councilmember Gardner, and myself as the representatives for the city council on this committee. Does anybody have any further comment?
I had a comment. I think some of the recent comments, if I can maybe try to bring some clarity to that, you know, I'm sorry that things have become very personal because it also deflects from a serious issue, and that is that people's neighborhoods have been altered and they justifiably feel that the city could have done more. And they're desperate for answers and they're angry. And having visited those neighborhoods myself, I understand that, and I hope that the city does take an approach that does listen to its residents and that is proactive, because there are some really serious issues that we need to address here.
Thank you. Any further comment by council? Open up for public comment.
I came up here three times, April 10, April 24, and July 24, specifically asking for your help. I asked for your help. Not one of you gave it to me. I had documents, I had findings, not one of you said anything to me. None of you. And then the few people that I feel have real culpability here, Mayor Rosansky, City Attorney Clausen, and City Manager Bloudow, the people that have real culpability here do a hatchet job on me publicly by twisting and spinning facts that obviously you know are incorrect.
Mr. Rush, please address your comments-
The ad hoc committee.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Morris asked you directly, did you have any financial dealings with rehab, rehab homes? You answered, I had no ownership interest. Did you have any financial dealings?
I'm not going to sit here and debate this. If you want to talk to me offline like I offered to this morning, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Okay, I'll continue. If you did, you will jeopardize anything that this committee develops, any ordinance it comes up with, and I urge the council not to allow Mr. Rosansky's participation until he comes clean and stops dancing around and answer. It will jeopardize what you're doing, it will jeopardize what we're trying to reach. Too many people in the community have been put through too many Clintonese-like definitions of the law, and this should stop and you should just be open and say, I do or I don't. Now personally, I'll tell you, you said that I'm telling people that you had financial interest in rehabs, I never said such a thing. What I said was, somebody came to us with information that said you were involved with several rehabs, period. Financially involved with several rehabs, okay? I confirmed that with several people that are close to you. They ran it by you. They came back to me and said, yes, he was financially in some way involved.
In what manner?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to answer your questions.
See, this is it, Bob.
I'll, I'll give that information at the right time to the right authority.
It's easy to cast aspersions, but when you're asked for the information-
I will give that at the right, point of order.
Well, you have information, you're asking-
Point of order.
No. If you're asking the council members-
Point of order.
Um, the point of order is, I'm the mayor and I'm speaking. That's the, do I have the ability to take the floor back from the, from the public? Thank you. Please be quiet, Mr. Rush, until I'm finished. You're asking council members up here to make a decision to not include me on a committee because you claim that you have talked to people and people have responded to you that I have a conflict, that they've given you information. And if you have that information and you would like these people to follow your recommendation, then I am inviting you to provide that information so that they can make a rational, reasonable decision. So if you have the information, I asked you this morning about it, and I'll ask you again now, please provide the information. I'd love to hear it myself.
I'm providing the information. I will provide the information. What was told to me-
Go ahead, we're listening.
What was told to me by the two individuals who are close to you, that I'm going to remain silent at this point about, I'll talk to you about it later. The two individuals said that you had financial dealings with rehabs-
What financial dealings?
That you had received income from some aspects of rehab houses that you were involved with.
What type of income?
They were in your district.
What type of income?
Let me finish. They were in your district, something to do with a friend of yours, and you gave the money back after you found that the rehab issue resurfaced and it became a hot button item again. Now, did you, or did you not tell them that?
No, I didn't.
You also said that you had discussed it with a newspaper reporter and it was old news and tell Bob to move on. Both of them said that to me. Both people that are close to you said that to me.
And is that all the information that you have?
Yeah.
Is that all the information you have?
I have more information.
Please let's hear it.
I will release it to the right authority at the right time, and you're not the right authority.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, any further, Bob?
Fine. You want to risk what you're doing in the ad hoc committee? Is that what you want to do? You want to risk the product? Let these people spin you right into it.
Anything further, Bob?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any further comment on this agenda item?
I'd like to change the tone a little, David Diamond.
I'd like to change the tone too, sir, but unfortunately, that's the tone we have tonight.
I understand. What I'd like to do is hear the discussion of how members of the community can get involved on the ad hoc community, ad hoc committee to aid the members of the council that are going to be on it and others who have been involved in this issue.
I, well, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, but I, this is not really a public involvement-type committee. It's a committee that is being formed and set up as a liaison between the city council, who has retained outside counsel to advise us on the, on the group home sober living issue ordinance at all or whatever. And so it's not going to be a, they're not, I don't believe there are going to be public meetings. We need to do that in order to preserve attorney-client privilege because of things- We need to do that in order to preserve attorney-client privilege, because of things that we'll be saying back and forth, you know, we'll be privileged unless we do open it up to the public, and then it becomes non-privileged. And so it's not your typical type of committee where, you know, you're having regular announced committee meetings and the public's invited to attend. Is that accurate? Robin?
Yes, that's accurate. This is, this will, this committee will be the direct relationship for legal advice, which is attorney-client privileged.
Okay, so I appreciate your offer, but unfortunately, that's, will not be the avenue to do that.
Will there be any means of fact-finding or perhaps communication to the Ad-Hoc Committee of facts which we think, or at least each individual by himself would think would be important, salient to the work you're doing?
Well, the committee's not going to be doing fact-finding per se. The attorneys have been hired in order to basically, you know, in a sense, do that for us. They're going to research the law. They're going to talk to the various groups involved, whether it be, you know, former attorneys who've worked on it, the Citizens Committee, the Citizens Committee attorneys, residents that have information that they want to provide to the, to the law firm that's been retained, Richard Watson and Gershon. So that avenue remains open. If you have information that you would like to provide, it would be provided directly to the, to them, or you can provide it to one of the council members, certainly on the committee, and we can pass it along to them.
And will, will the committee have available to them the surveys and the answers and recapitulations of the, some of the difficulties the residents in the proximity of these, some of these group homes are, are going through?
All the information that was collected by the city up to this point is, either has been or will be provided to the new council. And, you know, the city survey that was done, all the hearings that we've had, you know, either here at the council or the Planning Commission, even the IROC Committee meetings that we had before, all the information is being given to them for their, you know, assimilation and assessment, and then they will be advising us on the ordinance as we move forward.
Okay. I understand the legal issues and things of that nature, but as to ongoing problems, different problems, evidence that supports some of the allegations of the people living in the community, this could be prepared and presented one way or another so that it can be at least reviewed and taken into consideration by members of the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Sure. If you have information that hasn't been previously provided, either, you know, like I said, provide it to me, or Nancy Gardner, Mike Hen, or you, you know, you can contact the attorneys directly and provide it to them directly if you like.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your tone. Hi, Dolores.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Dolores Hoddington. I live in Newport Beach, and I've been coming here for many, many years and many, many moons. And unfortunately, it is the right of the public to come up and be able to say whatever they want to say, and you're really not supposed to come back and criticize them. Not, not saying that happened tonight. But, and it's in the Brown Act, and I'll bring it back to you again, because I seem to bring it back every year, every eight to nine months. And so anyway. But in regards to this item, thank you so much for letting me be off, for letting me be off the agenda for a second. Item number 15, personal, this is the reason why, see, you could do this without doing this, because I'm sure, you could just say you had litigation, and you could all meet behind closed doors with these attorneys, okay? And this is what I thought was going to be happening when you adopted this. At the September 11th meeting, I questioned the fact that the Ad-Hoc Committee was only going to be to interview, remember Councilwoman Gardner? Yes.
And it was. That's why it sunsetted.
Right, it sunsetted. Now we have a new committee, which is going to do the same thing that I thought it was going to do anyway originally, which is going to be to meet behind closed doors. And I can understand some of why you have to do this. But I would suggest that when you get some kind of a work product out of there, that you could not only discuss with the, I mean, like with the rest of the council, but you would discuss it at the same time on, at the City Council meeting, or is that how it's going to be done? Because, believe it or not, this is their lives, and, and you've just closed them out again.
Dolores, we haven't closed anybody out. The attorneys have been instructed to speak with the residents, to speak with the resident's attorney, to make sure that they are fully represented at the table, so that they, our attorney can understand their position, and to the extent that they can be accommodated, or they're reasonable, or legal, they will be. So no one's been shut out of the process.
Okay. Well, I know what Ad-Hoc Committees are like. We have a lot of them. And so it, they, you might not think they are, but I bet that they feel they are, okay? And, and so it's, I, I understand why you would want to do it, okay? That's not the point. All right. Thank you for your time. I don't need you to get all pissy up there.
Well, I'm sorry. It just seems the way that this evening's going.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that one of the things that is the product of this is a set of ordinances and rules and regulations that will be brought to the City Council in full public hearing before we, and discussed, I'm sure, at great length by all of the various different parties. And then at the end of the process, we will make a determination of which ones of the various different recommendations we feel want, we want to put into an ordinance, and so that the public will be given as much time to discuss it as they had before the Planning Commission in, in getting this way. So that the public is involved, but we have a very technical issue that we feel have, was in need of more legal advice and to, to get it to finished product. Isn't, I think that's what we're working on doing.
I think so, too.
I support the action and would move to adopt your recommendations.
I would second that.
We're not finished here with the public comments, so let's finish that up before we get into council comments. Anybody else that'd like to speak on this?
Dr. Linda Orosco. I didn't really intend to speak this evening, but I'm going to have to. I feel like the historian of rehabs in Newport Beach. Four years ago, October of '03, I came to City Council to complain regarding a drug rehab house in my neighborhood, Narcanon. I came to explain the situation, what I understood of the situation, the overoccupancy of the situation. They had over 35 individuals on the property with a 27-person occupancy certificate issued by the city. Never a use permit, never a conditional permit, never a hearing. I came to City Council several times to complain, to ask questions, to try and understand why. I went to the Planning Commission at least twice to understand why. In 2004, there were two public hearings, and there were numerous City Council meetings specifically to solve my problem and the problem of the city. We had five state-licensed rehab houses in 2003. Irvine had none. I distributed videotapes to City Council to show the nuisance and the overoccupancy. Those were confiscated by Bob Burnham before City Council members could take them home. In 2005, the rehab house that I complained about at 27 occupancy was doubled to 49. There was no public hearing, no conditional use permit, and the City Assistant Attorney emailed me and said the city did not consider going from 27 to 49 occupancy to be an increase in intensification of the use of the property. In 2006, the council started a new citizens committee to solve the problem of rehabs. In 2007, there are now 24 state-licensed rehab houses in the city of Newport Beach, one in the city of Irvine, and there's over 100 operating illegally in the city. That's four years later. I encourage this Ad-Hoc Committee, whatever you create, to do something. In four years, the house I complained about four years ago doubled. In 2000, 2011, will it be 79 in that house? I beg you to do something and take action, because now there's more people angry about inaction and about the conflicts that appear and that we know have happened. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak on an non-agenda item?
Non-agenda items.
I mean, I'm sorry, on this particular item. Daydreaming.
Denise Oberman. I just want to reiterate one simple thing. This is not a matter of legal feasibility. It is a matter of political will. It's that simple, and if you choose to exercise political will consistent with your fiduciary responsibilities and the will of the people, we will get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
I move we adopt the recommended action with the members that you suggested.
I'll second that and just briefly say, you know, having visited the ground zero over the weekend and yesterday, that I was really shocked by what I saw. I mean, it's a real eye-opener. And, you know, in terms of tone, being a veteran of a lot of public hearings, I kind of know not to do the waltz if everyone else is doing the tango. But I would like to say that, that it is evident to me that the problem has gotten away from the city, and that most touching to me was when I visited Barbara's house, and Barbara lives a couple doors from a facility of maybe 49 people. And she's a retired school teacher. She and her husband bought the home 35 years ago, and now she lives next to a facility where trash is picked up daily. There's noise. The lights are on constantly, and there's probably been a diminution of property values. And it was really a good thing to go down there, because it allowed me to connect with people that I represent. And I believe that the city does need to look at this in a, in a proactive way for the citizens that we represent.
Any further comment? Councilman Curry?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important, given all of the testimony and sort of the tone of the testimony, that we look back and see what's been going on over the course of this year. This council has formed the IROC Committee to get citizen input on this issue so that it can be evaluated, and people will have a forum to discuss it. We placed a moratorium on new developments. We've developed an ordinance. We've sent that ordinance to the Planning Commission for extensive hearings. They have had hearings, and they've sent it back for additional legal review, and it's gone back to the Planning Commission, and ultimately will come back to the City Council. We've engaged outside counsel for legal advice on this issue, and we're now engaging special counsel for additional legal advice on this issue. I know I personally have sat down twice with Mr. Rush and twice with Ms. Oberman. I've sat down for an extended period of time with the Jackson Titus Law Firm and have read the briefs that they have provided. And I know that this council is committed to finding a solution that's the most effective ordinance possible within the confines of the law and the Constitution, and our responsibility is to protect the community, and that's the goal that we're all moving towards. And I believe we're going to get there. And I believe we're going to get there, hopefully, with civility. We're going to get there with a legally defensible ordinance, and we're going to get there in a way that we can do something that's effective to address the issues in the community. And this is a start, or another step, tonight.
Thank you. Any further comment by council? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number 16, initiative measure amending the City of Newport Beach Charter to locate a new city hall at Newport Center. Have a staff report?
Yes, Your Honor. As you mentioned, the issue before you tonight is the certification of the initiative measure that was brought forth to the city on May 7, when the proponents filed their notice of intent with my office. On May 30, after the proponents published the notice of intent, they began circulating their petition. On August 24, the proponents of that measure filed approximately 15,028 signatures with my office, and at that point in time, they were taken to the county to begin the signature verification process. On October 1, we were notified by the county that of the signatures that they verified, there were 8,997 signatures that were verified, which was the number that was required, which is 15% of the registered voters as of February 10, 2007, which is the last report of registration to the Secretary of State. In, in doing their verification, the county checked 10,870 signatures and found 1,873 to be invalid. The instructions that I provided to the county when I took the petitions to them was to cease checking the signatures once the required number was reached. On, on your agenda tonight is the consideration, after you have certified the petition, is to set the measure for the ballot, since they receive 15% of the registered voter signatures. If you are interested in a consolidated election date, the three dates that would be available to you and the estimated cost, which were figures that were obtained from the county, would be February 5 of 2008 at an approximate cost of $116,457. June 3 of 2008 for a cost of $100,000, or November 4 of 2008, which is our regular general municipal election, so that cost would only be $4,500. The estimated costs for February and June are based upon a projection of total jurisdictional participation and a 10% increase in voter registration over the current registration. And as far as November, since it's our regular election, the cost is based primarily on additional translation, printing, and mailing cost, and an estimate of the length of the measure, the arguments and the rebuttals, and it's based on our cost from past elections. If you were to elect, to put this election at a standalone election, the cost for that would be approximately $226,000. Whichever date that you select, the election must be called 88 days prior to the election. So for the February 5 election, the last day for you to call that would be November 9. If you selected June 3, the last day to call that election would be March 7 of 2008. Or if it, if you selected November 28, the general municipal election date, the last day to call that would be August 8. If you chose a standalone election, you could choose April 8. That is a regular election date. The last day to call that election would be January 11. Tonight, if you select February as the election date, the steps that you must take would be to approve the certification, adopt the resolution calling the election, adopt the resolution requesting consolidation with the county, adopt the resolution setting priorities for the argument against the initiative, this is an optional step, and directing the City Attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, which is also optional. Adopt the resolution to provide for filing of rebuttal arguments and approve a budget amendment in the amount of $42,000. The $42,000 basically covers the cost for the signature verification, which was approximately $36,000, and the balance of that would be, go towards any ancillary cost that would be, that we would, that we would incur between now and the date of the election. Any of the additional election costs would be a supplemental budget amendment at a later date. If you choose not to set the election for February, then you would take the actions outlined in, in Number 1 and 6, which would be the approval of the certification and the approval of the budget amendment, so that we could pay the county for the services that they provided. All the other actions, actions could be postponed until 88 days prior to the election date that you choose. One of the options that you have when you set this election is that you can set priorities for direct arguments. Probably since the last time we talked about arguments, this is new. The law has been changed, so proponents are automatically given the priority to write the argument in favor of the measure. And if the council so chooses, they can set one to five members to write the argument against. They cannot designate anyone else or a combination of council members and outside people to write that argument. If you do not designate anyone, the priority for arguments is as follows, would be a legislative body or members of the legislative body, only if designated. The individual voter or bona fide association of citizens or combination of voters and associations who are bona fide sponsors or proponents of the measure, a bona fide association of citizens, or individual voters who are eligible to vote on the measure. As far as the direct arguments, if you select February as the election date, those arguments are due within 14 days from today, so they would be due by 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 23, and would be limited to 300 words. The rebuttal arguments would be due 10 days after that, would be by 5:00 PM on Friday, November 2, with a limit of 250 words. And if you direct the City Attorney to prepare the impartial analysis, that would be due by 5:30 on Tuesday, October 23, with a limit of 500 words. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any council comment? Council comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
On writing the rebuttal arguments, if, if we don't designate any of the council members here, what standing does the Parks or Priceless Group have in that list that you read off there?
They would probably have the first priority, if the council does not designate any of the members themselves.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
I just that, when I saw these figures, I think in my own... I just that when I saw these figures, thinking my own budget, I went, oh, November, forty-five hundred dollars. You never seen anything in four figures at the city. It was very exciting. But after consideration, after discussion with one or two people, thinking that probably the earlier the better, so that we should probably spend the money and get this settled.
Okay. Anybody else want to have comments before we open into public comment? Okay, it's open for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Alan Beek. I would like to play pay tribute to Bill Ficker, an old friend, a fine gentleman, and a winner of the Gold Star and the Americas Cup. But there's a story about Bill that not many people know. Twenty years ago, we had a referendum election about expanding Newport Center. Bill led the charge on the side of the Irvine Company. They spent a lot of money. The night of the election, the Irvine Company had a big party at the Bay Club. We gathered for a party, or a week as it might be, in the Lovells home. It was a special election, so the ballots were quickly counted in about twenty minutes. We had won. In a few minutes, the telephone rang. It was Bill Ficker. He said, "This party is no fun. Can I come to that one?" That's how great Bill is. I've heard Bill give a couple of roasts. He has a fine sense of humor. One of those, he roasted the honoree at a testimonial dinner. After hearing himself praised all evening, the honoree said, "Thank God for Bill Ficker." Forty years ago, Costa Mesa had an elephant race. Pretty funny. Well, now our master humorist has a joke to top that. He has a scheme to put the location of City Hall into the charter. The charter, this is our constitution. It tells what form of government we have. Note that the U.S. Constitution does not say where to put the Capitol Building. Big guiding documents are not the place for administrative details. The charter does not specify the speed limit on Coast Highway. And it is arbitrary to vote on just one candidate location. There are a dozen or more good locations. If any one place is really different from the rest, this is it, right here. To a lot of people, this is the best choice. If they had enough money, they could pay four dollars a signature and have an initiative to keep it here. Shall we have an initiative for each candidate location? What if two or more pass? And if you do pick one to vote on, don't pick the worst one, where massive excavation is needed and there are severe groundwater problems. They say, "Oh, but this one is better. This one saves money because we already own the lands. We don't have to spend any money on a site." Any sixth grader can see that giving up parkland to save money is the same thing as selling off parkland to help balance your budget. And selling off parkland is a real no-no. Even when they went broke, New York City didn't solve their budget problems by selling off Central Park. You can't put a high enough price on parks. Parks are priceless. This joke is a bad joke. Unfortunately, to many people, it is just a joke. When we try to raise money to fight it, they laugh, but they don't cough up. Wake up, people. The park destroyers have lots of money, and money buys elections. If Parks are Priceless can't come up with the money to fight back, this thing might actually happen. Look up Parks are Priceless on the web. Help out. Make sure this joke never goes beyond the laughing stage.
Thank you, Mr. Beek. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Deborah Allen, and I want to make it very clear that I'm speaking only for myself. No organizations and certainly no city bodies that I may sit on.
Don't want anybody hollering at you, huh?
That's right. We've been there enough tonight. I'm going to ask you to specifically vote to allow rebuttal arguments to this initiative, and I'm going to tell you why. Most of you know that I'm an attorney, but many of you may not know that my undergraduate degree from UCI was social ecology with a specific emphasis in land use planning. And this initiative is bad planning. If this initiative passes, it will add seventy-two thousand square feet of new office commercial development, not currently entitled, to Newport Center. That is roughly the same size as that seven-story building that sits in the center of the three-sixty San Miguel Medical Plaza. If this initiative passes, it will force the city to build City Hall on the park site, regardless of traffic congestion. Even if it causes gridlock at Coronado Mar Plaza, even if it causes gridlock at the library, even if it increases the existing gridlock at San Miguel between Avocado and MacArthur Boulevard, the city will be forced to build City Hall and build it there because it's in the charter. The city must build the City Hall on the park site, even if it turns out that when you go to build it, it completely obliterates both public and private views of the ocean from MacArthur Boulevard. That is because there is no environmental impact report for an initiative. The California Environmental Quality Act does not require an environmental impact report or an EIR or even a negative declaration for an initiative. So it will skate past all environmental regulations. If this initiative passes, the City Hall, the city will be forced to build the City Hall, regardless of whether you determine that we don't need one. Even if you could streamline city operations, go paperless, outsource, even if you determine that maybe you don't even need a new City Hall, you can divide up some of the uses, you will be forced to build a City Hall on that site, whether you need one or not. Most importantly, well, they're all important, but one really important feature is if this initiative passes, you will be forced to build a new City Hall on the park site, regardless of the cost. Right now, you have an estimate of fifty-five million dollars to build the City Hall that this initiative calls for. That does not include the cost for massive grading, for retaining walls, and for solving the groundwater problem that this site has always had. So what's that going to add? Three million dollars maybe to the cost? Five million dollars? Ten million dollars? What if the estimates are wrong? Doesn't make any difference. You will be forced, as a city council, to vote to approve a City Hall on that site, even if it costs a hundred million dollars, because it's in the city charter. And there will be nothing this city council can do about it if this initiative passes. Putting a City Hall location in the city charter is bad planning. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Debra.
Thank you, Debra. Yes. May I ask the city attorney, Deborah Allen has raised a couple of issues about what ifs. And to paraphrase, you know, what if we have an environmental problem? We have some general plan issues here. It's different use from the general plan. We're required to make an appropriation, which is otherwise a discretionary act of the council, in order to build the building there. It's an issue that she raised. What if some of those things just don't work out? What if we lose a green light vote? I raised that issue before myself. What if we start digging and we find that it's not a buildable site? What if we have, we have view issues that are specific to that site in terms of ordinance? And what if those cannot be mitigated effectively if this were to become law? What would, what would happen then?
With all due respect, I don't think I can predict that far into the future. Those are all issues that are raised by the initiative that probably would not be resolved until the council faced them. They're not resolved and they're not answered in the initiative.
Would litigation likely resolve? Would a court solve these issues for us likely? Potentially?
That's a potential.
Okay.
Just one quick comment on this being a buildable site. It's going to be very interesting if this is not a buildable site because there are a hell of a lot of buildings in Newport Center already, including a library right next door and everything else. And I just would find it extremely unusual for this to be a unique site that's not buildable. That's just not true. It is a buildable site.
Any other comment from the public?
Bernie Falstad, Corona Mar, council persons, staff. Obviously, this probably is going to pass, but question I ask, probably in the end it'll be an enforcement matter before, if this ever passes, as an initiative. But Daily Journal published nine twenty-five oh seven, a case that deals with the right of public entity, I think you may have this, to use open space park land deeded to it for parks, playgrounds, and a recreational area for use other than that stated in the deed. Court of Appeals held no. Court upheld the original open space park use limitation. This is similar to RCOSA open space limitation. Also goes to the issue of whether, if initiative passes, would it be enforceable or subject to legal attack? The case is County of Solano versus Handlery. So I think probably in the end, hopefully this doesn't pass, if voted upon by the citizens, but it'll probably end up, I assume, in court. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Good evening, Nancy Skinner, once again. I thought the question was when to have the election. And I guess my preference would be to have it sooner rather than later. And one of the thoughts I had is that perhaps if it does pass and we do have to have a green light vote, that we could incorporate that into the inexpensive November election if we do have to have a second vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'm a resident of Newport Beach. As far as when we have the vote, I would think the sooner the better. I think this is a flawed initiative, and I'd like to see us get it behind us. This is a thing which now is, I think, hindering negotiations for a better site in Newport Center. And with due respect to the council, I think there was a feeling that the Irvine Company gave us this property originally because they did not think it was a good site for building. But if we spend enough money, I'm sure that we can get some kind of a building on that site. But this is an initiative which destroys open space. It challenges views that have been protected for a great length of time, and it adds traffic to that particular area of Newport Beach. And I just hope that we can get this behind us, and then the negotiations, which the mayor and other members of the council have been involved in, can go forward. So I say, bring it on.
Thank you, you. Any further comment on this agenda item from the public?
Council members, staff, James Turner, Newport Beach resident. I urge you to move forward and get this decided. The vote will decide whether people want the open space or not. So move ahead as quickly as possible. Let's get this vote over with. Thanks, Al.
Thank you, sir. Any further comment from the public on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment section. Got to be quick in this room, Barry.
I'm Barry Allen, live in Newport Beach. But I first have to comment that I'm very happy to find out that all the tenants of Rosansky's rental properties drink.
I'm going to be drinking after this meeting, too.
Nobody brought that issue up. I thought that, gee, that's perfect, you know?
I don't recall saying that.
You just said, you said, there's no group homes anywhere there. There's no people.
No, that's right. I get your drift, yeah. They're all, none of them are sober, recovering.
My comment on the subject here is maybe a little different than others because I'm going to ask you to do something that you're probably not going to do, but I'm going to ask you to do it anyway, just so it's on the record. All lawyers know that the word shall means mandatory. And I want the council to know and the people sitting at home listening to this on TV to know that, that if you vote for this initiative to build City Hall in the park, it must be built on this twelve-point-eight acres, and there's no way you can get away from it. And this is on an area, by the way, that this council named Newport Center Park. So it's a park. But no matter what, you're going to build a seventy-two thousand square foot office building in a park. No matter what the soil study shows, and we know the soil study has got problems, we know that the library's got, despite Mr. Webb's theory, as an engineer, by the way, they can solve all problems, engineers can. Lawyers have to unwind all the problems once they, once they design them. You know, we have to defend the lawsuits. But the point is, is that twenty-four-seven, you've got pumps running in the basement of the library. So, I mean, you've got water problems there. I mean, everybody in those neighborhoods around there knows that people hit water when they go down. But if you have a soil study that shows that there's a problem, can't do anything about it. You've got to build City Hall there anyway. No matter what the traffic studies show, they show that the traffic is going to become unbearable, you can't do anything about it, it's going to violate green light, it's going to do everything else that's wrong, you've still got to build it there, you can't avoid it. Any other building of this size anywhere else in the city would require environmental studies, but we'll have none on this building. There'll be none at all. This building has to be built. The law, in my opinion, is, if you read the law carefully, and I know that you've had letters, I think, from lawyers sent, I think, to the city clerk, the law indicates there's certain things that aren't subject to initiative, and this is one of them. Example, and just something I just came up sitting here, if I thought about it a lot longer, I'd come up with some better examples, just to simplify it. Initiative is put on the ballot to move state capital to Riverside. You think that's going to stand up? Not a chance. You can't do that because that's a matter that's up to the legislature to take care of, legislature to take care of, not, not the citizens voting in initiative. Initiative to move the state legislature to Los Angeles. You're going to take the legislative body and move it to Los Angeles with initiative by the people? That's something you can't do. You can't move it to Cleveland because you can't move, I'm not going to say anything about moving it out of Newport Beach. That was one of my arguments, build it in Costa Mesa, but I don't think you could do that either. But I'm trying to make them ones that really could occur. Move Caltrans' main building to Taft, California. Now, I think people don't know where Taft is. It's out in the middle of the desert somewhere. It would be kind of an inconvenient place to put Caltrans. But you put this on the initiative. And don't tell me that people won't vote for this because we know that people will come up and tell you anything to get you to sign petitions. Outside Mother's, the store in Costa Mesa on Seventeenth Street, two weeks ago, Deborah and I were both approached by a petition gatherer who said, "Will you sign this petition to stop global warming?" I said, "Let me see the petition." I looked at it. It was a term limits petition for the state legislature. Now, that's what petition gatherers will say. So people will sign anything. And the point is, is that people have signed something in this case, and that doesn't mean that you should put the imprinter of the city council of the city of Newport Beach on it by calling for an election. I think you should stand tall and say, "This is an improper subject for an initiative. We're not going to put it up for election." Let the people who pass this initiative around with their paid petition gatherers go to court and force you to put it on the ballot. I think that's what you ought to do because I don't think the court will make you put it on the ballot because it's not subject to an initiative. It's the building of a public building in some space, and I don't think that's the subject of an initiative. And you should vote no on putting this up for election. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Barry. Okay, last time I want to ask, is there anybody else who wants to speak on this matter before I close public comments? Okay, seeing no one, public comments is closed. Councilman Solich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I agree with Councilwoman Gardner. I think that we need to get this on the February ballot and get it resolved as soon as possible. Councilman Curry mentioned some potential legal issues, and I've heard a lot from a number of other people on it, and I suspect that none of those are going to be resolved until after the election is over. So to sit here and try and guess as to what they might be and how to deal with them, I think really is somewhat fruitless. Let's see what the results of the election are and find out where people stand on this I would like to see us do the I would like to see us do the priority setting in such a way that the parks are priceless people would have the priority for writing the arguments against the measure. Now, I'd also ask the city attorney if we -- I think one issue we probably should deal with is this whole issue of green light and Measure S and putting a companion measure or something on the ballot that would somehow inoculate this from having to meet Measure S. And when would we have to decide to do that?
That has to be done in 88 days. So it has to be before November 9th. So the council would have to give direction to have something drafted up and brought back for them to do that.
Okay, well, if we go ahead and follow these procedures here and set something for the February election, then that's probably something we ought to also include and bring back at a future council meeting. So those would be my comments.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Curry?
Can I ask the city attorney, are we able to put a green light measure on the ballot without adequate environmental analysis before that?
It would depend upon what the initiative, what you would be putting on the ballot.
Well, we know what their initiative says. Presumably, we would want the voters, as part of the green light process, to approve the traffic and/or, you know, impacts.
No. I think, well, there's various options, what you would want. If it would be a general plan amendment, yes, you would have to do environmental for a general plan amendment. But to have a provision in 423 of the charter, a companion provision in 420 that would address 423, that would say something to the effect that if the, if this measure passes, then 423 would not apply to any general plan amendment that would be processed.
So we have to exempt it from green light, essentially, is what it would be?
It would exempt it from green light because the voters would have, the argument would be from that measure, if the voters vote for it, they would say, "Because we voted for this initiative, we don't think it needs to have a green light vote." That would not exempt it from environmental document and all the other requirements that the city would have to do for a general plan amendment. They would still have to do that.
Well, I would just say, Mr. Mayor, that here we have yet another example of the flaws of this initiative from its inadequacy in terms of its environmental review, its inconsistency with the general plan and the specific direction of the general plan, its direction for us to make appropriations irrespective of where budget numbers may come back or where the buildability may come back in terms of looking at the site. You know, it's a proposal for which we will be out of compliance the day it passes because City Hall is not there currently. And when this initiative was conceived, I'm sure the proponents believed that this was going to be the Newport Center site and it was going to be the cheapest site. And as time has evolved, there is other Newport, there are other Newport Center sites, and indeed, it appears that once the data comes out, they're going to be substantially less costly. So nonetheless, we are going to be locked into this waiting game until this initiative to take a park, that people, when they voted for the general plan, voted for believing it to be a park and promises were made that it will be a park for it to be defeated. And I'm confident that it will be defeated. This initiative was financed by one person who put more than $160,000 in it by paid petition gatherers who are out of town who were paid $5 a signature. And even then, one out of five was fraudulent. But with a lot of money, you can get anything on the ballot. I happen to agree with Councilman Sellers. This should go in the February ballot so it can be resolved and that so that we can move on to address this issue in the city. I also would request, by the way, as part of this, that the city attorney prepare a fiscal analysis pursuant to the law.
There would not, there's no requirement for a charter amendment or ability for a charter amendment for me to do an analysis, but there is the direction on whether I would do an impartial analysis for the ballot.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Gardner?
I'd like to make a motion that we put this on the ballot for February, that the argument against would be offered, the opportunity would be offered to parks are priceless, that we have rebuttals, and that the city attorney do an impartial analysis.
Just a clarification, because I'm not against parks are priceless doing the opposing, but isn't it statutorily?
You cannot designate to allow them to do it. What you need to do is you would eliminate that part of the resolution where you designate one to five members of the council, which automatically then would put them as probably the next in line to be able to write that up.
I will amend the motion then to say that no council member would present an argument, but otherwise, it would stand as I stated.
Does that motion also include the approval of the budget amendment?
Yes.
Does that mean no council member will present an argument that would be published as a part of this? It doesn't restrict council members from commenting on their opinions during the election process, does it?
I think you've got free speech, don't you?
That's what I would hope.
But I'm just saying that we will not be appearing on the ballot argument.
I think, yeah. So no council member will be a part of the ballot measure comments as opposed to the broader timeframe?
Can the clerk just restate that, if you can kind of wrap that up to make sure we're in all on the same page?
As far as the entire motion?
Is Councilmember Gardner's motion?
Would be to approve the certification of the initiative measure amending the city of Newport Beach charter to locate a new City Hall at Newport Center, to adopt the resolution calling and giving notice and holding of a special municipal election on February 5, 2008, for the submission of a proposed charter amendment, the adoption of a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Orange to consolidate a special municipal election to be held on February 5, 2008, with the presidential primary, and to adopt the resolution to direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, adopt the resolution to provide for the filing of rebuttal arguments, and to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $42,000.
That's exactly what I said.
Did you mention the priorities? I thought you.
The part of the resolution that pertains to priorities, if you're not going to designate yourself, that will not be included in the resolution. A council member can write an argument if they wish to submit it as an individual. However, when I select, if I've got two or more, if parks are priceless submits one and council member Webb or somebody submits one, parks are priceless will take the top spot.
Actually, just for the sake of the audience and even the council, because I don't know that we're familiar with the procedure, what is the procedure that you have to follow when the opposing arguments come in?
When the opposing arguments come in?
Well, the proponents are making the pro argument, right? So the con argument, let's call it.
If one or more are submitted, then the priority is as follows. If you do not designate yourself, it would be the individual voter or bona fide association of citizens, or a combination of voters and associations who are bona fide sponsors or proponents of the measure, a bona fide association of citizens, or an individual voter who's eligible to vote on the measure. So if you don't designate yourself, then you would fall down to that last category.
I guess what I'm getting at is how do you make your decision? Let's say you get three arguments. How would you determine whose argument against the initiative prevails?
I would base it on this section of the elections code, but if there's more than one bona fide association, I would look at who has been in existence longer. Those types of things are looked at.
Okay, and it's solely your discretion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. That clarification. You're in the hot seat. Okay, any further comment?
I just had one comment. Councilman McCurry mentioned fraudulent signatures. I would like to take exception to that.
Actually, what I, a clarification, the signatures that were disqualified, are they fraudulent?
No, they're not. They're invalid.
Invalid signatures, Councilman Webb.
Because I consider they had 15,028 signatures based on the percentage of approval. That was about 83%. I think that most signature gatherers are lucky if they get 75%. So I think this is an extremely high level of validity. If I were to expand that a little bit, that's be a total of about 12,473 signatures. That's more votes than I got when I was elected. So I think that we owe it to our citizens to go forward, and let's get this done, and let's see which way it ends up.
They're paid $5 for those votes, Tom.
Yeah, a lot of those were not paid collectors. A lot of those were people that, as my understanding, that contacted Mr. Ficker and said, "Hey, I'm really interested in this. I'm going to take a signature around my neighborhood." And people were really, I had a person stop by my house to get information on where he could sign a signature. So I feel that your characterization that this is all $5 signature votes is not correct.
I think it's.
Councilman Curry?
I would just say it's based on simple division from the amount of money spent on petition companies from the campaign reports.
Councilman Solich? Call for the question here.
Oh, no. I want the last word.
So you called for the question. Now she's answering your question. Go ahead, Nancy. Have the last word. Please, go ahead. No? Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Now, do we need a separate action for the city attorney to prepare something to consider on as a companion measure?
Well, I don't think that's an agendaized item. Certainly, you can ask staff to come back with something next week, but that's not an agendaized item. Okay, so we have reached the end of our schedule here, or agenda, yes. I would, well, close to, oh, no, we don't. We voted on that. That was the consent calendar, the skip loader. Which committee? It's consent calendar. You've been consented. I would like to make an announcement that we are going to have a special, please, folks, we are going to have a special meeting of the city council on, what is it, October 17? We're going to have a closed session, or a study, no, closed session, and then we'll be followed by a seven o'clock meeting, a special meeting to solely discuss the issues of extension of the moratorium of group homes and silver-living facilities.
Thank you. Bob Burnham did that a few years back, and you kind of adjourn to a closed session. You have to adjourn to a meeting.
We're not adjourning to a closed session. I'm just mentioning that we're having a closed study session prior to the meeting and then a regular session at seven o'clock.
Thank you. I misunderstood. It's been one.
Not adjourning to a closed session. Thank you. We're adjourned.